Thank you all for being here. It's great to see all the faces in the seats tonight. So, let's get through the roll and the pledge. I'll explain the format and we'll get rolling. So with that, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Peter Talbot.
Here.
Jen Jakes.
Here.
Nina Allard.
Here.
Don Mylone. Greg Wolf. Don Walsh. David Belver.
Here.
Jonah Pierceit.
Here.
Patricia Kramer.
Here.
Corbin is present.
Please rise and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution and to the Constitution of this nation, our God, the individual, liberty, and justice
So item number three is the general proposed fiscal year 2526 budget overview by Town Manager Shawn Kimball and Cheshire Public Schools Superintendent Dr. Jeff Solan. I have asked them to do a brief with the emphasis on the word "brief" because tonight, at least for us, is all about hearing from you. So, they are going to do a presentation, show you where things started, where we currently sit, and then we'll get to the public comment section. And I'll explain that when we get there. And with that, I'll turn it over to Town Manager Shawn Kimball.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We will do our best to keep this brief. I think neither Jeff or I like to keep our presentations too brief, so together we'll see how this goes, but we're going to do our very best. And so, first of all, I want to say, thank you all for being here tonight. This is really important. It's very heartening, too, to see so many folks coming out interested in this obviously very, very critical topic tonight with the adoption, the consideration of our fiscal 26 operating budget. So, I'm going to start, we're going to talk a little bit about some of the major budget factors. You see four of the key ones here. Increased costs that we're experiencing throughout our town departments and the Board of Education. Grand list that is effectively flat, which I'll just touch on briefly in a minute this year. Increases to our debt service, which is largely driven by the town's approval of the construction of two new elementary schools, but also prior approved capital projects that we've had over the last couple of years. And then this year, and kind of unique this year, reductions in our state and federal aid. So I'm going to get into a little more specifics here on the next slide. This is a slide I put forward in my first budget presentation back about a month ago, and it summarizes in sort of rounded, broad terms, the perfect storm that we're dealing with here with this budget. Starting as we always do with our budget consideration, with the revenue side of the ledger, you'll see at the top here, we've lost a significant amount of state aid year over year. So we are, in both the Payment in Lieu of Taxes grant and the Education Cost Sharing grant, we are losing a combined $900,000 this year. Also, year-over-year budgeted, we had a $500,000 budget for the municipal revenue sharing account, which unfortunately was not funded this year, and we do not anticipate will be funded next year either. And then we lost about $1 million in what's called the motor vehicle tax cap grant. This is due to the fact that prior to the current year, our mill rate was above the statewide cap of 32.46 mills on car taxes, and the state reimburses about a year later for that tax loss that they calculate towns are losing from the cap. So this year, which we knew would happen, as we lowered our mill rate last year due to revaluation from 35.09 down to 27.46, we're obviously not eligible for that grant reimbursement as we're not over 32 mills anymore next year. So we have to also account for losing that $1 million. In addition, as we passed last year's budget, again, the budget year we're in right now, fiscal '25, we had assumed $1.3 million worth of the remaining ARPA funds, federal funds we had remaining to balance the budget, and also used $1 million more of general fund equity versus what I proposed in my recommended budget. So, taken all together, that's $4.7 million of lost revenue on those big-ticket items. Moving to expenditures, the Board of Ed approved budget is just a little bit under 7% or a $6.2 million increase. Debt service, as I said before, is again driven by some of the borrowing we're having to do to fund the construction of our new schools as well as previously approved projects. This year, that's an increase of $2.6 million. And on the town budget side, all over the rest of our departments, my recommended increase when I presented in March was an increase of 3.9% or just about $1.5 million. You sum up those three major budget items, you get $10.3 million, and then if you take that 4.7 and the 10.3, it's a very nice round but very alarming $15 million hole that we started this budget with as we present. So, the value of one mill, right, for each of our mills that make up our mill rate, currently at 27.46, the value of a mill is just a hair over $4 million because our total grand list is $4 billion of value. So if you divide 15 million by four, just a bit over 4 million there, you get 3.7 mills, and that's the increase that we've had to recommend in this year's budget. That's about a 13, a little over 13% tax increase. So that's where we started. What does that mean for the average taxpayer? What we do in our analysis every year here with the Town Council is we take the average property value, that's a value of a list price value of about $425,000, so a home valued at 425. You'll recall from assessment, that's, we take 70% of that when we assess a home, so that's $297,000. When you compare the tax bill this year at 27.46 mills, that's an $8,175 tax bill for a home, and the proposed at that 31.16 mills is $9,277. The same applies for what we do. We assume, on average, homes have two vehicles for this calculation at least, so we take that to show the value of two average vehicles. You'll see that goes for two vehicles from $700 total to $727. The grand total there is the $1,129 increase that we started this budget process grappling with. Moving forward, I'll talk first just about some of the town budget adjustments the Town Council has been discussing and is proposing over the last few weeks. We are looking at increasing our revenue assumptions. That includes pool and recreation fee increases, interest rate assumptions, building permit assumptions, as well as using some of the annual Elan Park gift funds that we receive for police and fire to help balance this year's budget. For a total revenue adjustment of about $1.4 million is on the table right now for consideration. And on cuts to proposed expenditures for general government, we are currently at $628,000 worth of cuts. I was asked to identify cuts in about that ballpark amount, and that's what I've presented to the council over the last couple of meetings. Debt service reduction of $300,000 due to some premium we received as we sold bonds just last week. And then, cutting our annual contribution to our capital nonrecurring fund, this is cash we pay and set aside for capital expenses, usually budget about $1 million, we're proposing cutting that in half to $500,000. I'll just touch on the general government real quick. I can probably summarize this one a little bit. You'll see these are some of the, these are the items that we identified and discussed just Tuesday night. I won't go through each one, but I would just highlight a few key ones. Some are larger than others. You've got medical insurance reserve funds that we're going to try to use to balance some of our medical benefit expenses on the town side. Reducing the pool subsidy, that would require a pool user fee or meet fee increase, something we'll be discussing probably later this evening when we have our budget workshop on recreation and the pool. Cuts to the beautification budget and their annual beautification service projects in town. Eliminating fireworks at the fall festival, or hopefully finding a sponsor to take that on for the Chamber of Commerce. Public Safety Commission request of $3,200 that we would be unfunding. Again, some of these are just first-year requests that we would be rolling back. And then you see down further, we have a number of insurance lines, and then an additional $165,000 below, which is eliminating any vacant, or a number of vacant town positions that are currently, I have a hiring freeze in place to not hire, and we would then not fund those in the next year for that total of 628. So with that, I will turn it over to Jeff for the Board of Education's side.
Thank you, Shawn. Just to kind of set the table here a little bit, Mr. Talbot asked me last week, Friday, what would a $2.2 million reduction look like? So this is an exercise, this is a draft. It's not definitive because ultimately, whatever amount of money that we're allocated by the Town Council will come back together as a board. I'll make final recommendations based on that, and they'll be deliberated by the board. We always start as far away from possible, far away from students as we possibly can. So, items like maintenance are initial considerations when reducing our budget. This year, the magnitude of a $2.2 million reduction makes that impossible, so we definitely will touch staffing and programming. The other thing is, we don't have much of a revenue side on the education side of the street. We do collect a student activity fee for students participating in interscholastic athletics and activities. We haven't increased that in about eight years, so there's a $10 increase in that activity proposed. The DURG-B PPE spending, that's per pupil expenditure, this is how much our peer communities spend per pupil. This is just the total amount of money spent divided by the number of students. You can see we're very competitive there. If we spent the average, our budget would be $5 million higher if we spent what the average amount is, so I think representing a good value. So, that puts a little bit more stress on trying to find reductions. First cluster of budget items we took a look at is certified salaries. This roll-up is all of our certified salaries. So in this reduction, I mean, we are a people business, the bulk of our money is spent on staff and benefits for those staffs. So, there's a $440,000 reduction. That would include the elimination of four and a half teaching positions, as well as bakes in the six retirements and savings inherent, hopefully, in those retirements. The instructional expense account, this is pretty much a 15% reduction across the board, and that nets us a savings of $341,000. A lot of the reductions roll back to what we were spending two years ago. Maintenance and operations, the reduction here is $783,000. We do have an energy performance, oh, that's not in this section, the energy performance contract. I know we discussed that on Tuesday. It's a contract that the community entered into a decade ago that we continue to fund. But the reductions here are really in maintenance. We already, as the board factored in, the fact that three of our buildings will either be closed or destroyed at the end of next year, as we're replacing three schools with two new schools. So that was already factored in, the bulk of this would come from more or less preventive maintenance. We're still going to repair things. If the toilet breaks, for example, we'll still repair that, but a lot of repairs will be delayed, or, like I said, preventive maintenance will be reduced. So of the reduction, and the total reduction, $290,000 of that 440 on the salary line will come from elimination of some projects, some programs or teaching staff, as I've outlined here on this slide, and I think you have on the handout. It's not all of these. Again, we would have to select where we would be making these reductions to try and meet the budget. So again, the total reduction is $2,021,352. The intention was to draw $200,000 from this year's budget to carry over to next year to pay down next year's budget a little bit. So we'd be, we've already frozen accounts, like Shawn had said, on his side of the street, to try and make sure that we can come up with $200,000 between now and the end of the school year.
All right. So just to wrap this up, you're probably asking, where does that leave us with those adjustments? Again, just to summarize those revenue and expenditure adjustments we just covered, that totals over $5 million from that $15 million hole I started with at the beginning of the meeting. So at this point, the council's already considered or is recommending it, over $5 million of adjustments. As Jeff said, beyond that, we start to get into, I think, deeper service cuts on both sides of our street and service reductions that take, you know, serious consideration and policy discussion. So, we, where that leaves us is currently a proposed mill rate of 29.87 mills. Here's that same calculation you just saw before. You'll see the average house residential property, taxes go from 8,175 to 8,893, and then a slight reduction in car taxes just due to the value drop there. Again, there's a lot more I could unpack with all of this, but I'll probably leave it there as we kind of summarize. There is one more slide, just to kind of compare where we are currently. These are mill rates for towns we're often compared to, either desirability or proximity. I intentionally, versus a version of this I showed the other night, I removed the towns that are having their revaluation this year in October '24. That includes your Wallingford, Prospect, North Haven. But, took those out only because it was kind of skewing things. Actually, they're even higher. They're in the mid-30s right now, but they'll be going lower, assuming they have the same impact that we had last year with our revaluation. But that being said, these are now all mill rates currently for fiscal '25, the year we're in right now. And I think you see Cheshire, compared to our peer towns, compares pretty favorably, or at least we're in good company with respect to the mill rates that we have for comparable towns. Again, you know, in the local municipal budget world, unfortunately, the property tax is the largest driver of our revenues. We don't have the ability to seek other sources of revenue beyond, again, modest fees, state grants, which I said before, declining. So it falls back on the very visible, always frustrating for all of us, property tax. And so that's what, again, where it drives, you know, 80% of our revenues. So, I'll leave you with that, and I'll turn it back to Chairman Talbot and take some public comment.
Gentlemen, thank you very much. Much appreciated. I gave you 15 minutes and you were about 17. That's not bad at all. Thank you. We appreciate that. Like I said, this is all about hearing from the public tonight. Before we do start, I do want to recognize our Board of Education members, as well as Cheshire Public Schools staff that is in attendance tonight. For the public's edification, we do have both BOE and Town Council. We have a hard stop at 7:15 tonight, so we're going to give you 55 minutes of speaking time. The Town Council is off to a budget workshop, and Board of Ed has their regular meeting. They'll be staying here. Anyone that we do not get to tonight can submit comments via comments@chesherct.org. So if you do not get the opportunity to speak, and I'm hopeful that we do, get through everyone that wants to speak, or for anyone listening at home, that is the way to still submit comments. The podium is to your left or right. If you want to queue up down the runway there, we ask that you state your name, your address. We're hearing tonight from Cheshire residents only, that we will limit the comments to two minutes, and we'll get through as many people as we can. And if we do have some time, I have some comments that were submitted via the website that I will read into the record. And with that, the microphone is yours.
Good evening. Name is Bob Bearver, 435 Squire Hill Road. I've been here in town for going on 28 years now, I think. I have sat on the Board of Ed and other town committees, and being on this side of the microphone for a meeting like this is unusual. It's nice to hear what you have talked about, but I didn't hear anyone talking about, unless I missed it, reduced overtime, possibly reducing hours of certain programs in town. I know it's a terrible thing to say to the library, but the library's always been in the crosshairs. I don't like to see that touched at all, but it has been in the past and maybe will be again at some point. But I was wondering if you can have a contingency budget, because the federal government is in such throes right now, trying to figure out what's going on, from their standpoint, as little as possible. But that doesn't help the state, and the state doesn't help us. And I'm just wondering what you can do for an alternate budget if needed. I don't like the idea of raising the class size, but I know that in the high school that might be necessary. Please do everything you can to maintain the smaller class size in the K to 6 level. That's always been a good point here in Cheshire, and I like that. You're raising the student activity fee, but in the past, back in 2008, I think it might have been, there was a pay-to-play portion in there that, I'm not sure if we actually did that, but that was a, is a possibility.
Mr. Bear, if you would wrap it up, please, so we can get to the...
Yep. And it's a terrible situation because you can't come up with a proper answer knowing what we know from the federal government. So just do the best you can.
Thank you.
Good evening. Tom Bartley, 60 Brigadoon Drive, Cheshire, Connecticut. I have been following the budget conversations for weeks now, and I want to acknowledge the yeoman's work that everybody has put into, be it the Board of Education, all the different departments in town, in terms of trying to identify various revenue streams and/or cost-cutting opportunities that we have across both budgets. Reality is, is that 8.1% is unsustainable in terms of our town's ability and our townspeople's and citizens' ability to be able to pay a bill like that. So my concern is not just about this year, because we're setting a baseline for next year, the year after. My concern is what we're going to be doing, not just this year, but the year after, and the year after that, and the kind of strategic planning that we may or may not be engaging in right now. So if I have a question for the Town Manager, it basically is this: We have two major projects going on at the north end of town. Do we have, what is the anticipated revenue stream from those projects, and to what degree can this town expect those revenues to offset the cost-cutting or the cuts in revenues that we've experienced this year, and potentially cost increases we could experience next year, either through the Board of Education or other services through the town? So again, this 8.1% is simply unsustainable. When you drive around town, there are hundreds, if not thousands, of households that are on what I would call fixed incomes. And the idea of finding, of asking them to pay 8%, 9%, 7% year after year, puts their ability to stay in this town at risk. So it's not just looking at this year. I'm wondering if you can provide some insights as to what we're looking at from a financial health standpoint for this town going over for the next couple of years as well? Thank you.
The north end revenue, Mr. Bartley, is about 5.5 million in rough numbers. We will not start to see that until the year 2027.
Okay. Is that for both projects, both the housing project and the north end commercial project?
Yes.
That's combined?
Yep.
So theoretically, this 8.1% increase should be dropping way down as we start moving forward. Not the increase itself, I realize this is a baseline, but I mean, is it reasonable to reassure Connecticut, Cheshire taxpayers that with the increasing streams that we're going to be seeing over the next couple of years, that will offset some of the kind of, you know, factors that are driving our tax increases right now?
Well, keep in mind that a lot of it, and I don't really want to, because it's cutting into your time, I don't want to get into the Q and A, but...
Understood.
A lot of it is the debt spike. Like 2.3% of the debt service this year was from the referendum on the two new schools that we're starting to pay. So a lot of the debt service increase, 93% of that increase in debt service is from the two schools. We will see something equal to that next year before it begins to level off, and eventually it will tail off, but it's a 20-year process.
Thank you.
Good evening. Robert Hamm, 633 Cortland Circle in Cheshire, and thank you for the work that everybody here has done. It's clear that you've put a significant amount of time into it, and it's appreciated by myself certainly, and I'm sure most of the citizens. A couple of quick questions, and actually, I'd like to echo Tom's comments about 8.1%. Those of us that are retired in this room aren't sustaining some sort of an 8% increase in the income that they rely on for their day-to-day. And I think we're all living beyond our means in this state, probably in this country, and we do it. And I think we should try to set an example as this town, to be able to try to mitigate that as much as possible. I was pleased to hear you say, Mr. Talbot, that the $5.5 million, two years hence, could be coming. I'd like to make sure, I'd like to actually put it to the, as a challenge, that we don't actually go out and pre-spend that money and perhaps overspend that money. I'd like to see us underspend, live within our means, below our means, as a town, if at all possible. I have one other significant, or one other question of substance, or perhaps of specificity: What is the average class size, and to what extent could we raise that class size? It's my understanding that we do very well with that in that context, but by reading of education journals and being familiar with education in general, would suggest that average class size is not necessarily an absolute indicator of quality in education. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hamm. Dr. Solan?
Very quickly, I could say, you know, I know Faith could show, where all of the documents are on our website, under the Board of Education budget in the binder, it has not just our current class sizes, but the full history of them is available there.
But that, what is the average class size overall?
It's 19 at the elementary school, it's about 25 at the middle school, and at the high school, I want to say it's 14. That's dividing all of the students divided by all of the staff, not just core content staff. And that is, falls toward the bottom end of the DURG-B reference group, in terms of the most number of students per teacher. Certainly, I'll add that to our website first thing in the morning, make it readily available.
Thank you, Mr. Hamm.
Deborah Manke, 1725 Cheshire Street. I'm speaking to support the educational portion of the budget. As the Town Council and the Board of Education move forward in their decision-making, please keep in mind the most important needs, the students. Teachers and paraeducators are the front-facing professionals who do the work, they do the instruction, they do the teaching each day. They're the people necessary for the students to grow and move. They are the people who educate our students. It's teachers that cause learning. The human element of the educational budget is our greatest resource. It's important to keep teachers and paraeducators in this budget. Please remember, Cheshire Public Schools, through the work of Dr. Solan, Mr. Maciano, Ms. Solano, and the administration at each school, at Cheshire Public School, already run on an extremely lean, they already run an extremely lean operation. Mr. Solan just showed it with the slides. Our school budget is always lean, and it has been for years, and our results are always high. If cuts are made, whatever is targeted, please cut with the intention of replacing them into the budget once the revenue from the north end is added to the town budget. Should you have to make decisions, whatever decisions are made, I hope you do so with the consideration of replacing them whenever possible. I fear that if we make too many cuts, even in this very difficult year, they won't be replaced in the future. I've been a resident of Cheshire my entire life, 62 years. I'm a product of Cheshire Public Schools. I'm a product of Cheshire Public Schools. I had the honor of being part of the teaching staff for 35 years. My own children were educated in Cheshire Public Schools, my nieces, my nephews. My son, who is still residing in Connecticut, would eventually like to be in Cheshire. Why? Because of the schools. Cheshire is a community people want to live in and raise their family in. Dr. Solan is famous for his comment: People don't move to Cheshire for the nightlife. The draw to the Cheshire community is our schools. This is a difficult time and I know decisions have to be made, but I'm asking that the educational portion of the budget be kept intact as much as possible and that should cuts be necessary, teachers and paras, the people who work directly with the students, are not cut, and that any cuts that are made be made with consideration of restoring them down the road. I strongly support all of the people on the town council and the Board of Education. You've done a lot of hard work and it's greatly appreciated. You've reached out to the community to get our thoughts tonight. You're taking your time to listen. I know your task is very hard. I have very strong belief and faith that you will work in the best interest of our town. We have an amazing school system that has run cost-effectively for many years and continues to do so. Please support the educational side of the budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Manke.
Good evening. My name is Gillian Kucheski. I live at 45 Copper Valley Court in Cheshire. I am a mother of two children of the Cheshire Public School system. I have a son who is in seventh grade at DOD and another son who's in third grade at Chapman. My experience with my first son was out-of-this-world spectacular in the Cheshire Public School system. And frankly, to echo what the previous speaker said, it's why my husband and I moved here before we even had kids in 2007. My second son is in Cheshire, in Chapman now, in the third grade, and his class size is above what is the average. The average is 18.8. His class size is 23. In his classroom this year, we've had three different teachers and we're hiring the fourth permanent teacher to kind of ride out the last quarter of the year. It's been a very difficult year for the children in his class. And I can't say that the class size is really the only reason for that, but I can point to it as a piece of evidence that the physical size of the building in Chapman, and I know that's a limited thing, but we still have to live in that, in that class size for another year or two before we get to the bigger school. And my concern in reading this, that the certified salary reduction leads to a larger class size is frankly unacceptable, specifically when you've got 23 third graders in a classroom in Chapman. So I have a lot of concern about the reduction in teachers. I've actually had that conversation directly with Dr. Solan and he provided me with a lot of information and, you know, really acknowledged that it's not an ideal situation. So I really would encourage the group here to try to avoid those sorts of solutions. I know some may look at that as temporary, but my kid is only in third grade one year and he lost this year. He started the year with his scores above grade level and they've remained stagnant. I've noticed it in our challenges with homework and he's really not the same kid he was going into the third grade academically. The support in the school is wonderful. The school counselor has been a godsend for the kids in the class. So I just beg of you to not touch those frontline workers because they're the ones that really preserve the reason why so many of the people provide the taxes to you in this town.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kucheski.
Hi, I'm Justin Mizoney. I'm at 207 Patton Drive and I think I'm going to echo a lot of what was just said. Our daughter is in fourth grade in Doolittle and I think that one of the main reasons why we're here is because of the education system in Cheshire. We had the opportunity to move into the area. We looked at here, Wallingford, Southington, and Cheshire really went out because of education. So I urge you to think hard about looking at the programs and looking at the class sizes. Our daughter now has had an opportunity to work on STEM programs. She's had an opportunity to work in the Talented and Gifted Programs and those are really what give her a challenge in school and make her engaged. Without that, she was significantly less engaged before she were in those programs. She's looking forward to being able to learn Spanish in the upcoming grades and there's a chance that she won't be able to do that. So I do think on top of this personal effect in our family, I think it's something to consider when we're trying to attract families into Cheshire. We definitely did side-by-side comparisons with the other towns around and without these programs, Cheshire probably would not have been at the top of the list. So please make that consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Mizoney.
Good evening. My name is Mark Izzo, 245 Richmond Glen Drive, Cheshire, Connecticut. I thank you all for the opportunity to come and speak tonight. I've been a resident of Cheshire since 1972. I'm a product of Cheshire High School. So are my girls. What I saw as 13% increase, now it's 8.8%. It isn't sustainable. I'm a senior citizen. I'm on a fixed income. I'm, you know, social security's fixed, my, and so I am working part-time to kind of pay for things like taxes. I don't want to, but I do. I've also chosen to live in a 55-plus community. Town provides very little services to me. I get garbage picked up. I don't get my roads plowed. I don't get electricity. Those are all, we pay for that. So on top of the taxes, I pay over $425 a month in my HOA. Now you'll say, well, you chose to live in that community. Yes, I did, because I wanted to stay in Cheshire. I also know the work that goes into the education system, so I'm all about education. But at this point in time, 8%, 8.5%, 9% is not sustainable. I can't afford to stay here. I won't be able to afford to stay here. And when I see an increase, potentially you're saying the average is 7.15. Well, given where I live, that's going to be more like 1,300 hours. So I'm just saying is that I know everybody's worked really hard. It's a good presentation. I'm hoping the ECS money is greater than what you've put into the budget then. But I think you need to consider, and again, somebody like me who's living in HOA, the town, I'm getting no, I'm getting very little service out of the town. I mean, I drive the streets, we have the police and the fire department, God bless all those people that do that work, but it's getting harder and harder to live here. So I just ask that we do whatever we can. 8.8 is a good start to get down. I'm just hoping we go further. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Izzo.
Hi. Diane Visconti, 795 Devonwood Drive. Boy, do you guys have a tough job. I really don't envy you. But what I'm just thinking about, too, is that this is an election year coming up and what I'd really like everyone to do is to not just vote no on the budget, but to tell exactly what you would cut. Because it's easy to say no. It's easy to say, you know, we don't want to pay 8%, 10% more, whatever, but it's really hard to say what we wouldn't, what we would cut. So I would ask you all to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Visconti.
Sean Henry, 1375 Half Moon Road. Thank you all for all of your hard work. I've been following along on YouTube for hours and I don't envy you. But, you know, I'm here to express my gratitude to everybody who works in the school system here. My family and I moved here a little over a decade ago because of the schools. We've had a really phenomenal experience so far. We have three boys in the school system, two at Highland, one at Darcy, one of which has been able to overcome some speech challenges because of the incredible support he's received at Darcy and, you know, will always be thankful for that. I understand cuts likely have to be made, but I'm deeply worried to hear that some cuts could be made to the staff at the school system. I'm already worried about how just packed they are at Highland and the shortcuts that, shortcuts is probably not the right word, but how thrifty they've been in making things work in such challenging circumstances. And I'm really worried that that's going to get worse. So, you know, if we're considering cuts, which I understand you have to do, I hope we're looking at all departments equally. We're looking at nice-to-haves, you know, hopefully we're not increasing marketing budgets or things like that before we're, you know, thinking about cutting staff. So would strongly encourage you all to avoid that as much as possible, although I realize that that is a tough task and, you know, thank you again for your hard work.
Thank you, Mr. Emery.
Hi, my name is Rob DeCarly, 22 Woodridge Drive, Cheshire, Connecticut. So I moved here a little under two years ago from Southbury and I still, you know, talk to friends who I know who are on the town council there. They've moved their town hall from a five-day work week to a four-day work week and I don't know if that's an idea you guys have explored from a cost-cutting measure. Certainly, just because Southbury's doing it does not mean it's a good idea, but I don't know enough about the pros and cons of doing that, but that's, I thought, was at least an interesting enough idea, even if it's just temporarily because, you know, if this is a tough budget year, maybe we do four-day work weeks for the summer or if there's any lull time. I thought it was an interesting idea. I have no idea if it's a good idea, but I thought it was an interesting idea and I figured I'd bring it to you guys.
Thank you, Mr. DeCarly.
Hello. Jamie Cox, 498 Juniper Lane, Cheshire. We moved here about two and a half years ago without ever having been to Cheshire. We did so because I needed my spine fused in Waterbury and we looked on a map and said, let's look at school scores. And came in and found a community that we really love. But we moved here directly as a result of the scores at the school. And I can't tell you how thankful I am we moved. With the help of people like Mr. Jeffrey sitting behind me, our kids have flourished and we're very happy to be here. The reason I came up is because I'm a businessman and when you think about tax revenue, you think about the value of homes being bid up and how that directly impacts tax revenue. Having such an outstanding school district creates a, an outsized demand for homes, which can, you know, may be difficult, but can and should be quantified in the way that that increases home values and directly increases tax revenue. So I just consider, or ask you to consider that as a factor when you're assessing whether to cut at schools. The other operational items, I'm in commercial real estate. I spend an outsized amount of my time looking at cost-saving measures and ancillary revenue, things like solar, which I've spoken with Dr. Solan about via email. You have a lot of municipal holdings. Connecticut is top 10 states in the U.S. for solar revenue and it allows you to sell the energy back to the grid if you have enough land to overproduce what your needs are. That can be a really meaningful revenue stream for the city. And then as an owner of many municipal and commercial buildings, there are a lot of ways to really get granular in your energy management, including having the biomass of the building manage your energy. Some of these programs actually will pay you a rent check as a dividend for using their software and systems. I'd be happy to make any introductions, but I would just encourage you to look at every possible item so that you can get as detailed as you can before you go to schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cox. Further comments?
Hi. Good evening. I'm Julia Gleason, 185 Chipman Drive in Cheshire, Connecticut. I have three school-aged children in the Cheshire school system and I just kind of wanted to make a pitch for the proposal to eliminate the middle school athletic programs. You know, sports brings a lot to kids. You know, it's physical exercise, it's community. The sports offered at the middle school especially, like, they're different, right? We have track, cross-country, and volleyball, which are sports that are not really recreational. So it introduces those to kids that might not have tried otherwise. So, you know, I think getting rid of those possibly eliminates the opportunity for those kids to be a part of that program. It could also increase the amount of, like, downtime for kids after school because a lot of kids participate in the sports and even kids that don't go, a lot of the kids in the middle school go to the events and so it gives them something to do. And that downtime between, like, 2:00 and 5:00 can be critical because parents are still at work sometimes. And so, you know, there's not a ton in Cheshire for the kids to do after school. You know, so I worry a little bit about that, that time and, you know, what possible dangers that could cause. The athletic program cuts also look like it's one of the smaller cuts. So I don't know if perhaps it wouldn't make a big, enough impact getting rid of such a big thing. I know there's a lot of people, a lot of kids, looking forward to participate in middle school sports. I also saw unified sports as a possible cut. And, you know, that's such a great program to have, you know, our traditional students and then our special needs kids together. You know, it builds community, inclusion. And so, you know, I would just recommend that that not be considered as something to eliminate. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening. Karen Schnitzer, 18 Courier Place. I have lived in Cheshire for 15 years now and it was our son and daughter-in-law who moved to Cheshire for the schools. We moved to Cheshire to be near them and to be near the rail trail. I know that's not hard to believe, but I used to rollerblade and so when we lived in West Haven, we would come up here like every weekend in the spring and summer so I could rollerblade on that roller, on that rail trail. So just, just, there are lots of reasons why people, why people come to Cheshire, because it's a fabulous town. And then I just want to say thank you to all of you for your hard work on the budget. I know it must give you a big headache. So thank you very, very much.
Thank you, Ms. Schnitzer. I know the Tylenol usage has increased at my house.
Mary Niro, 55, Jesse Court. It's funny, I've been in Cheshire now 50 years, okay? And my husband and I were newly married and we moved here because the taxes were low. All right? We had, we both grew up in New Haven and our options were Milford or West Haven or Hamden or whatever, and Cheshire's taxes were the most affordable for us. We've enjoyed our time in Cheshire, but with the tax increase last year and the tax increase that you're proposing this year, it's gotten to the point for people like us who are on fixed incomes that we're going to start looking for someplace else because we can no longer afford Cheshire. And I think there's a lot of people in my situation that are in the same place. It's just getting to be unaffordable. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nero. We still have 25 minutes, so you've got plenty of time.
Good evening, Regina Thornton, 165 Creanberry Lane. Thanks for all you're doing. I haven't been overly involved because I broke my wrist, so I've been doing other things or nothing, actually. So this might have come up. But have you considered whether there might be opportunity to change benefit plans or make modest changes to the benefit plans for the employees, both the school employees as well as the town employees? And there might be an opportunity there, pension plan, benefit plan, just a thought. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thornton. I'll kick it to, I, I think I can probably answer it, but I'll kick it to the experts, Mr. Kimball and Dr. Solon.
Expert might be overshooting as far as I'm concerned. My expert's sitting in the front row, but I do know that we have spent, and, and we regularly spend a lot of time taking a look at benefit plans and different options. We're self-insured because it is a cheaper option. We've looked at the state, you may have heard, offers a plan for communities to enroll in. That is still more expensive than what we pay in, in Cheshire. The, the portion of the insurance that our employees pay has gone up every year, but it's still not enough to keep pace with growing medical benefit costs. I pulled a, I put together a graph today for the council about a decade ago. Medical benefits was roughly 14% and change of the Cheshire Public Schools budget. Today, it's about 20% of the budget. It's roughly a increase of $5 million that it eats up of our budget that takes away from staffing and other things. So it's certainly something that we examine regularly. And I don't, Sean, if you want to add anything there?
Yeah, I would just add, like, like the Board of Ed, we, you know, regularly negotiate our union contracts, which include changes to the plan design and the cost shares and the co-shares that the employees put in. I think we're very comparable to all of our peer towns there or even further. We long ago moved to, you know, high deductible health plans and all of those other factors. We definitely don't have, which you might assume are sort of gold-plated insurance plans, unfortunately wish we could offer them, but we, we have gone for the lowest cost that we can afford. And I would just add, as Jeff said, we are self-funded, which means we pay through our fund that we've established. We pay all the claims so that we don't pay insurance companies any additional overhead in profit. So they just simply, the insurance company simply manages our plan. But there's no additional add-on there, so we're directly paying the claims. Means we're a lot closer to the claims and the trends and we have a very robust wellness program and, and things to try to curb that, those costs. But, uh, but I think we put on a slide the other day that if we, we did quote two years ago what it would cost to have a fully insured version of our same plan and it was over $3 million more combined between the town and Board of Ed, we share in that effort together as, as really joint plan sponsors. So it's a, it's a great suggestion and consideration. It's one we regularly look at and will continue to do so.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Bryna Shane, 62, Hilltop Road, Cheshire. First, I would like to commend all of you for all the hard work and the many hours you put in on this very hard budget year and a lot of decisions that had to be made and certainly were not easy ones and, and well thought out. I lived here close to 20 years. I don't know the exact amount, but it's around that. And I moved here because I worked in all four prisons in Cheshire as well as the women's prison, so I retired from the state and federal government where I worked at Social Security, 15 years. My concern in this is the loss of state revenue. It says it's $4,700,000, am I correct? And I know many years the state has kicked in a lot of money for the, for the schools and other things. And I'm just wondering if you could explain that loss of revenue and will that, we don't know if it'll continue next year or not. But I just wondered why that great loss happened and if you could just explain that better, please.
Yeah, happy to do that. And yeah, back on sort of that first slide that I had, the $4.7 million is, is not all state revenue, it's mostly state revenue. But because you have the ARPA funds, which were federal dollars, the $1.3 million there, and then the, the use of reserves we had last year, which was $1 million. But, but that $4.7 million that we started in a hole from the revenue side of our ledger, I mean, that alone equates to about a 4.2% tax increase. So we started, if, even if, if, if the town's budget was zero, if the Board of Ed's budget was zero expenditure increase, and if we didn't have to pay 2.6 million of debt service, that we have to do, we're legally obligated for money that we've borrowed, we would already be at a 42, 4.2%, even if we somehow could have all of that zero. So in answer to your question about the state specifically, I actually had some information earlier today with respect to the pilot payments. We were part of, a few years back, they passed a tiered program for towns to receive pilot payments in exchange, you know, offsetting the loss that you have from things like the prison property or colleges in town, such as Legions of Christ or other properties that are not taxable. And we did get finally a determination on what happened with pilot. We moved from tier two to tier three because our grand list went up out of our control, but because we moved over $200,000 equalized net grand list per capita. Jim and I were just, Jim Jaskin and I were working through that today. So it's not a function of lowering our mill rate, it's not a function of anything else. We simply moved to a different tier, which means we lose 25% of our pilot payments. So that accounted for $580,000 this year alone. So unless our equalized net grand list drops back below 200, which I don't see it doing, we're not going to see that money next year either unless there's a change in the state law or the budget associated.
So why did you move to a different tier?
So when we had revaluation last year, our overall grand list went from $3 billion to about $4 billion. The state runs what's called an equalized net grand list calculation on every town. It's a, it's a proxy value for the wealth of a community. And the way the statute was written, the tier stops at $200,000 per capita. And we moved from about $195,000 per capita to, I think, just a hair over 200. And so we lost $580,000, just the way the state laws written.
Okay, thank you. And thank you for giving concern to the people who are, who are on fixed incomes. I really would hate to see people leave the town of Cheshire because they can't afford to live here. I know I live, I'm on a fixed income now, but I hope you give concern to that. And I think it was Mr. Issa or the person that spoke that said he doesn't have enough attention paid to his roads and other things. Maybe you could talk to him or try to work out something that people can afford to live here and have the town help them in some way. Thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you, Ms. Shane. The town also opens and, and Mr. Kimball, I'll ask you to keep me honest here. The town offers a needs-based tax relief program. Is the enrollment period open now? Now until May 15?
May 15th is, yes, I believe that's correct. It's on our assessors' website. That's right, my town manager. Yes, you can visit our assessors' webpage for more information. That is both income-based and 100% disabled-based elderly qualified. And if folks qualify, you can receive different tiers of relief on your tax bill. So we do encourage folks to contact our assessors' office and see if you're eligible. And there's certain verification requirements you have to go through, but it certainly can be worth saving that, those funds for, for folks in that situation.
The state offers guidelines and the town council looks at that on an annual basis. And we increase ours higher than what the state recommendation is. While the podium is open and the next person makes their way to the podium, I will read a couple of the, the comments that we did get from comments@cheshirect.org to the members of the Cheshire Town Council. I hope you will consider carefully whether you will demand the Board of Education to make further cuts to their already streamlined budget that will undoubtedly inflict additional harm on our public school students who are struggling to overcome the after-effects of COVID shutdown. During this uncertain and confusing time in our country's history, it is clear that responsible fiscal planning is more challenging than ever anticipated. That, that said, you as our elected representatives are tasked with the unwelcome task of cutting the proposed budget recommendations from all public agencies in our town. I know this will be extremely difficult recommendations from extremely difficult undertaking. Though every agency has put forth their best recommendations for ensuring excellent service to our citizens, I want to remind you that a suburban community such as Cheshire realizes its reputation and standing by its ability to maintain and deliver high-quality educational opportunities for its students. For the past several years, I have paid careful attention to the development of the proposed education budget, and I know that the BOE has done due diligence in cutting recommendations that had been initially proposed to move our school system healthily forward. The decisions you make may have long-lasting impacts on all that makes Cheshire a desirable place to live and raise a family. Best of luck with your deliberations. Respectfully, John Bestor, 45, Tress Road. Good morning. I am unable to attend the meeting this evening, so this email, excuse me, addresses my comments on the proposed budget cuts for the '25-'26 school year. While I recognize cuts are necessary, as a parent of three kids in the Cheshire school system, two of whom receive special education services, I would prefer a tax increase to prevent the, to prevent the drastic cuts proposed. I recognize this is a minority opinion, but wanted to make it known that not all residents are opposed to a tax increase. Specifically, I'd like to address the cutting of paraeducators and middle school sports. Number one, we are already short on paraeducators in town and cutting two would be unfair to students who need the one-on-one support and all kids who will now be attending class with a child who is not receiving proper support. Inadequate para-support will result in teachers providing the support taking away from their ability to focus on teaching. The role paraeducators play is fundamental to the success of every student and teacher. Number two, middle school sports are a great time for kids to explore new sports and make friends and connections during a transitional time to a much bigger school. From a social and emotional perspective, I think middle school sports are critical for self-confidence in a non-educational outlet for students who may shine more on the field than in the classroom. In light of reading anxious generation this year, I think it's also a way to keep kids engaged in a screen-free way. Thank you for considering my opinions, Krista Kohane. Please make cuts to the town and BOE's budgets. We cannot handle a 12.7% tax increase. Since salaries and benefits seem to be the biggest part of the BOE's budget, perhaps it's time to consider a freeze on any hiring and not replacing anyone who retires. Also, perhaps, a 10% cut to staffing is something to be considered. Do we need all the administrators? Can we handle a little larger class size by eliminating a teacher or two? Maybe you should renegotiate your health insurance and try saving money there. Maybe you need to push out some of the large capital expenditures to a future date, hold off on buying expensive equipment, cars, et cetera. I've lived in town my entire life and have been paying taxes for the past 49 years. My kids have been out of the school system for a long time and live in other towns because Cheshire is too expensive. I'm facing huge long-term care expenses for a family member and it's costing me more than our pensions and social security payments bring in. So do me a favor and keep any tax increase to a minimum. Sue Zentec Kingroad. I appreciate you giving me the break and reading.
No problem. How's everybody doing? Jason Pincus, 5 Beechwood Court in Cheshire. Lived here my entire life, raising two girls in town. I wasn't really going to say anything until the employee benefits topic came up and hearing that it hasn't been put out to bid in two years when everything is going up at the rate it is, it just seems completely unacceptable to me. I know you're self-funded, but self-funded buying insurance from an insurance carrier is not at all an innovative solution. I say this with 20 years as an insurance consultant, risk management. I would implore you to go out to bid this year to control your expenses. It is something that should be done on a regular frequency. Every single person who's a business owner does this at a regular frequency and to hear you're not is just unacceptable. I would also like to understand what expense percentage is controllable and fixed through collective bargaining and what expense percentage actually can be touched in this process.
You guys have that off the top, otherwise we can...
I, I don't have an exact figure. I could tell you when we reduced our budget, it's basically everything that's not contractual unless we were to say, well, you know, textbooks are not contractual, any updates there, we're going to take all of them out. We reduced everything we could down to that contractual line with the exception of things that, like I said, are, are supplies that are necessary to, to sustain business.
Okay. So we're saying that two-thirds of the budget's the Board of Ed, 20% of that's insurance. Everything that's being touched is on the table and nothing else. I'm not talking about raising class sizes. I have two kids in the school system here, but I'm just trying to understand what we could actually touch without, you know, throwing the proverbial grenade in the room.
Yeah, I think that's what I had sent out to families in the, the spreadsheet, that green spreadsheet, that, highlights of that are embedded in this spreadsheet, but it was much more comprehensive in the sheet that I sent out to families.
Okay. And on the town side, is there any, I mean, percentage that we could talk about? And there's no percentages, Mr. Solon?
In, in terms of what percentage of our budget is totally contractually driven?
Versus collective bargaining negotiated?
Well, there's not just collective bargaining in terms of our contracts. We have transportation contracts, cleaning contracts, things like that. I don't, I don't know the exact percentage off the top of my head.
Could you put that on the website when you figure it out, please?
Sure.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Pincus.
Hi, Faith Hamm, 633 Cortland Circle, Cheshire. I remembered this time. You guys are looking for solutions and so I, you know, and I guess we all have to get creative. So I just was kind of thinking, what are some of the things you can do? These are not original. In fact, I think Mr. Kimball mentioned this the other night at the end of the board meeting. But are we looking at potential corporate sponsorships or partnerships for some of our more public spaces? It's done in other towns. It might be able to provide the funds to maintain these spaces and take some of the load off the public works budget. Also, are we looking at long-term contracts with our, with our various providers for, you know, to control our contractual rates? I know we looked at this when I was on the Board of Ed and it, it worked in a few spat, in a few cases, so it might also work with the town in general. And then I, I am afraid of what I'm hearing with so many of the elderly of this town saying it's time to go. And frankly, my husband and I are one of them and not, one of those couples, but not that we're looking for ourselves, but there are people who are hurting, who are on fixed income. So is it at all possible to offer more generous rebates or tax relief for a wider circle of the elderly in this town? Because at the end of the day, a vibrant community depends on multiple generations. It can't be all young and it can't be all old. You know, there's stuff that we learn from the new generations and there's stuff that the new generations learned from us. So I would just ask that as you are budgeting, please keep in mind keeping Cheshire vibrant with all age grade, all, all age groups represented. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hamm. Thank you, Ms. Hamm. And I don't want to speak for Mr. Jinks, our budget chair, but he has, he has asked that the council look into increasing the tax relief program. Yes, thank you.
Hi. I'm Amy Mizoney. I live at 207 Patton Drive in Cheshire. And I too do not envy the decisions that need to be made up here. They are, they seem impossible and at odds with each other, certainly. We have lots of family and friends in town and we have a daughter.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm so, I'm sorry. Is that better?
Yes, thank you.
Hi. We have lots of family and friends in town and we have a daughter at Doolittle who's in the advancing gifted program. And it seemed that, you know, we, we don't want to see anybody in town have to move because the taxes have increased. And certainly we don't want to see any of the kids go without their services, including our daughter. And I want to make, I want to be a parent and speak for, for my daughter and the other kids who are in the advancing gifted program and the STEM program, that there's nothing else like it. There's no other place for her to get the, that type of education. There's no other alternative. There's, there's nothing like it in the classroom. The way the current program is structured, there's, there's just no other alternative for her. So I, I hope that it stays in, in the budget for all of the, for all of the kiddos. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. One last chance. I have two more that I'm going to read and that probably will take us right to the 7:15 timeline, so. Saw the opportunity to comment on the budget proposal for the upcoming school budget. I cannot attend in person due to volunteering at church. Here are my thoughts for consideration of the cuts. Lose sixth grade Spanish before you touch any middle school sports. If kids want to learn language, there are so many pathways and apps at home. The retention rate in middle school is low and they would have no choice. They would have to choose, I'm sorry, it again in middle school. Keep it as an option in middle school for those that want it rather than making it mandatory. Try to keep the STEM program as kids need more experimental learning in our industrial model of education. More hands-on is better. You already know that's how kids learn and they aren't designed to sit at a desk all day as children. Lose the talented, lose the talented and gifted program in favor of more students able to be affected by STEM. Barely any students are affected by GNT. We need more innovators and problem solvers. This year, don't add another teacher during the budget transition away from federal funds. Bridge the STEM program into the CHS robotics program as justification for keeping it. More engineering, manufacturing pathways are needed. Pat and Amy Critchley, 780 Ives Row. And finally, my name is Mary Burnham. I am a retired person who lives at 45 Tress Road in Cheshire. Apparently, this is going to be a difficult year to establish a town budget. I don't envy the decisions that have to be made. That said, my main concern is the education budget, a budget I follow relatively closely. I know it is the council's job to review the town side of the budget and make decisions for each cost center. It is also the council's obligation to decide how much the BOE will spend, but it is the BOE's job to make decisions regarding the education budget based upon what the council decides the BOE should spend in total. It is my hope that the council will make as small a reduction into the BOE's request as possible. I have grandchildren who live in Cheshire. I also believe that children should be a top priority for any town. And it's from, again, Mary Burnham, and that is a phone number that I will not read. I don't see an address. With that, one last, one last quick pass. Seeing no one. Thank you so much for being here. It is much appreciated as everyone has stated, as everyone has written. This is a, a very, very difficult budget year. And you have the promises of this council as well as the Board of Education that we will do everything within our powers to, to balance things between the people that want lower taxes and the people that want to maintain our services. Thank you again for being here and have a good evening. Anyone that wants to still make comments can do so. Thanks again. With that, I will entertain a motion. Mr. Walsh and Mr. Jinks with the second, all in favor. We are adjourned. Thank you.